For Osage Nation Congress to order. We're in our ninth special session. Today is December 9, 2015. The time is 10:03 and we are on day one on our agenda. First item on the agenda is prayer. Congressman Mason, would you please next to all in the prayer this morning?
Almighty Father God, we come again this day to say thank you for the privileges that you've given us. We thank you and we ask for your divine guidance among our people. Our leaders here, Almighty Father, decisions can be made and things will be good for our people, Almighty Father, our Osage people. We ask for these things and turn it all over to you and guide us throughout the rest of this day, the rest of the time that we are here, Almighty Father, each and every day. Take care of all of our people wherever they may be and may be a son of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Congressman Mason. Congresswoman Lottrop Head, Congresswoman Edwards.
President.
Congressman Martin.
President.
Congressman Yett. Congressman Maker.
Here.
Congressman Mason.
President.
Congressman Norris.
Here.
Congresswoman Pratt.
Here.
Congressman Shaw.
Here.
Congressman Sutcliffe.
Here.
Congressman Walker.
Here.
Speaker Leibhorn.
Here.
Assistant Chief Leibhorn.
Assistant Chief.
Member Quorum. Next item on the agenda is the executive message. Congressman Chief Jefferies standing there. Good morning Chief, welcome to the chambers.
Thank you Madam Speaker, Mr. Congressman. I was preparing the important proclamation and a few comments, not a lot, but I do think on the first one of the employee 2016 annual plan of operations must be approved. The fiscal year 2016 is now two and a half months old because as you know it began October 1, 2015. This Congress has made some new law, making the annual plan of operation a legally binding document. The law has caused problems and I've asked our Supreme Court for guidance on that as you know. And I take it you all saw the certifications and questions that issued by you. Now last September despite all that, I pointed out that the annual gaming investment accounts, if they call it, we have substantial amounts of funds which we can access. And we all know that the law itself, Abl 730, said that this can get 100% over to the nation treasured and it's just a matter of course or sort of unwritten custom that we agreed to this 40 million or more annual amount from those accounts. And I'd encourage the Congress to consider paying off the $6 million loan on the master campus for some of that money. That does several things. It releases approximately $1 million a year in funds available for appropriation that otherwise we use for payments on that loan. And it also frees up the $31 million separate fund we call a permanent fund, which as you recall, the loan itself has covenants which keep us from accessing that fund. So yeah, I sponsored that permanent fund. I believe we need a permanent fund, but I don't think any of us ever intended for that fund to be tied up in a way it's been tied up. So we need to release that. And I also emphasize the importance of the new Tulsa Casino project. You all and I have heard many reports from gaming about why that's important. And the present structure is going to repeat just for the public what you've all heard. The present structure is becoming old and dilapidated. Nevertheless, Tulsa Casino provides nearly 45% of our gaming revenue. Now we are competing against the two new casinos additions that have opened recently and are opening in the Tulsa market. That of the Skogee Creek Nation and that of the Cherokee Nation. The end of the plan that you have for you is a casino and hotel project which costs $180 million less than a plan that was presented to this Congress 18 months ago and which may be supported. Of course I did not at the time I thought it was too extravagant. And we've been working to get that down to an manageable amount with the experts that knows all about this stuff. Now failure to go forward with the new casino, I've been convinced, is going to hold our revenues down. The present casino is in need of major surveillance upgrades. And NIGC requires certain standards as does our own gaming commission. The present casino also needs a lot of maintenance and repairs. Because the Tulsa Casino Hotel expansion would be built next to the existing casino, we can keep what we have now going 24 hours a day without interruption. But if we don't go forward with a new facility, we're going to have to spend millions of dollars on upgrades and repairs to the existing facility and we'll have to close down large sections of the existing casino while those are being, which will drastically reduce our revenue. Now as we move on quickly to the other items, 1528, ONCI 1528, addressing health benefit card. Assistant Chief and I were talking just before we went on to the agenda here. And we're going to defer to the Congress. We do believe that that issue has been put off long enough. We have to grapple with that budget demand of either a two-year or three-year carryover. Any of you I served with here in this chamber remember when we voted and how all that happened. I do think it's time to address it and so call support however the Congress wishes to best handle that. The budget setback amendments, we go listen from number three down through eight. I'm going to have to again close those. Well, we do have two main reasons for that. In case you decide to pass it, I'm going to have to sort of veto. The two main reasons you want to see is that albeit when our Supreme Court certifies those budget questions for review by the Supreme Court, we thought that it'd be best, we still do, that we don't try to take any further actions until those questions are settled, actions on those budgets. Now I don't know how the Supreme Court's going to move. And if you guys know how you, but I think none of us know. But if the Supreme Court strikes down those provisions that I objected to, then we're going to have to come back and pass these. We're going to come back and unwind everything. And so I want to watch the plan. I mean, it's before the Supreme Court. I never saw a plan. I've been trying to read as much as I can, but it wasn't published by the Congress in the last few days at least. I don't see a plan. So be advised if you go forward, you may have to may have done wind the whole thing. The other second reason I can tell you is we all saw the November 9, 2015 memo to the Speaker and me from the Treasurer, Callie Ketterer. And she says that these amounts that some of you may be relying on, on funds, it's not entirely clear due to the fact that quote "current rate," close quote, is not defined in the act. And she advises due to the need for clarification. We have requested Attorney General opinion and I think we should wait for some guidance from the Attorney General at least on what we should do there. So you'll see those are the two main reasons. Now moving on, the Membership Act and membership regulations, which is defined, you know, I can read the Constitution too. And so when it comes to this, and we've been talking about this quite a bit, we urge you to work with the executive on a solution to what we're calling an outrageous situation. No one in Congress or the executive branch has the authority to speak on what this language means. That authority is reserved to our Supreme Court alone. I do not want to have to take this question to them if we can work a solution to the problems. And the problems are immediate. I am holding up further burial assistance to these persons. We believe we're not descended from the 1906 Osage law. We have records of people employed who used Osage preference in employment, which led them to jobs over Osages who were actually descended from the 1906 Osage law. I talked to one Osage person who says she was 16 votes short of being elected to this Congress. And she and I understand that the amount of people who we have investigated are more than enough to swing the past elections and the upcoming Congress election. We know that some of these people have received full scholarships from many thousands of dollars from the Osage people. They have used our health benefit card and have received any other benefits that are reserved for those Osages who could show they have descended from the 1906 Osage law. This Congress has known about these problems and this membership investigation, at least since it was made public two months ago. I've had to act and I will give you assistance from this Congress. In fact, it is your duty to enact laws and maintain a proper rule to say that the Osage Congress though is going to take over the membership department and delay people wrongfully using our money. It is wrong and I'm going to veto that. If you override that veto, I will have to ask the Supreme Court what to do. But I can tell you this, I'm not going to release any more money to these people. I also, moving on, support the changes to the Competitive Minion Act. I support the Village Reaffirmation Act. And by the way, let me just very quickly say that our police chief asked me yesterday if this meant that the villages are having their own police departments. And I just can't see that. That would be up to this Congress. It's not in the present law. It's getting in the other. I told the police chief, I said there's one Osage Nation Police Department. And many years ago, my partners at the time and I represented most of the cities and towns in Osage County, Honee, Delaw, even Old Coss City, Shiner, a whole bunch of them. I can tell you it's very expensive because you should know to run a police department. I just can't see any of these villages just having the money to run a police department and their own work system, no matter how you vote. It's just, I just told the police chief, I just don't see that happening. So you've got to watch out for false rumors and boogeymen. And I can tell you that, that made no sense to me. I completely support the way the villages, the three villages are heading. I believe there are problems which Attorney General and I can't easily solve on the dilapidated facility, facilities, houses, properties, we need to bring it to cleanup, we need to pass nuisance laws and fight a delay to provide proper notice to those owners of those lots. And recall the Bureau of Energy Affairs has, regional office, has issued an opinion that you can just forget about those CFRs, Bureau of Ads, since 2006, this constitution. The villages have been mentioned and the Bureau recognizes this constitution. So they are looking to us to handle our own affairs. And so I'm all for what the villages are trying to do. I'm also for the Osage Hazard mitigation plan. And I'm also in general seeing if we can reach agreement on important actions without asking our Supreme Court for further guidance. Thank you.
Thank you Chief Standing Bear. Next item on the agenda is legislative message. Chief Standing Bear, Members of Congress, Assistant Chief Leibhorn. All right, it's here for watching. Thank you for being here. Osage Nation has called itself by proclamation into this ninth special session. The intent during our last session was to look at the annual plan of operations for the annual prices. I believe that it's time for us to look at it, for them to have their operational budgets passed so they can continue on with their business. They have done, to me, done us a service by separating the annual plan out into two portions. One is strictly their annual operating plan and funds. The appendix B portion is the expansion of the Tulsa Casinos. I believe that every member sitting here at the table realizes that Tulsa is our flagship casino and does produce the most revenue that we appropriate for all the programs and departments of this nation and that it is in need of attention. We've been looking at this a long time as a Congress, even during the third Congress, we were still, we were looking at expanding the Tulsa Casino at a much higher price. So currently I, I'm happy they divided the plan. I do believe we need to visit their operational budget. I'm here to say there are a lot of moving parts to what's going on operationally. I had a staff member count up and we received the annual plan in July 1 of 15. We received the appendix which has the expansion portion for Tulsa on September 8 of 15. We received an amendment to the operating plan on September 24. We received another amendment to the operating plan on October 26. And we have the most recent amendment we have received in our office on 12/1 to the annual plan of operations. So it's gone through many iterations. I haven't had complete time to completely review what this new amendment is. I plan on doing so, but I think that we're going to have a good discussion and we're going to do our best to further passing this resolution. That's my hope for this session because that's what we came back for initially. Which leads me to the next thing I want to address. When we put out a proclamation in Congress, we're a member of 12, a body of 12 members. We agree, and people agree to put things on a proclamation. All legislation starts out as an idea, an individual member's idea. We don't act as a body until we vote on those items that are on our proclamation or on our agendas before us. It's not a congressional act until a vote is cast in the affirmative. So it's a little bit different for us when we pull, when we move into a special session because we're pulling in a lot of ideas from each individual member that's bringing them to the table and saying this is a need or a benefit or something to further the Osage people's spending likelihood or taking care of our apartments. So this proclamation has gotten rather long, but I'm going to run through it real quick. There's, with several things on there. We have division bills on this proclamation. They're on our agenda today. One of which we're going to send to committee because there are two bills to look at for that one division bill, so governmental operations bill that will be assigned to a committee. The rest of them, we're going to do committee work on the floor. On our last actions in the regular session, we voted to hold a certain line item, FY15 spending, and ask the treasurer to give us a report of what, what that number was that would hold it there. We have got that number. I believe for the purposes of following our budgets, being able to track what income is in the, what money is revenues in the general treasury, that we're going to be presented to amend that amount. And we're going to look at that today. The next, one of the next things that we're going to look at is the Competitive Minion Act, which has been before us many times. I believe we need to, to take a good look at that and try to get it resolved before we start into another huge building project with our casino over in Tulsa. The gaming reform act has been the topic of conversation many times around our tables to try to figure out how revenue distribution goes. I would like to say though that the $40 million cap that we have currently imposed on ourselves was an agreement of the second Osage Nation Congress. And they agreed to do that to, for our casinos to be able to garner and collect money to expand. I think that we ought to honor that agreement. I think we have asked for money in, I guess last year was the first time we asked for an extra distribution to help us here with the nation. I think that possibly that might need to happen again. I think this, it's, we're open for discussion to that. I'm not going to talk about the division bills that we're going to visit a committee. A thing that I feel is very important is the Osage Nation Membership Act. It will be referred to committee and we will have great discussion there. I do agree with Chief Standing Bear that conversation between the branches of government about how this bill and how constitutional mandate is handled is, will be best for all people. I don't think going to our court systems, I realize that that resolves an issue, but I think that we should have the ability to resolve issues between ourselves without taking it that far. And that would be my wish for our people, to not be a litigious government and to resolve problems at a table instead of in a courtroom. So I think we need to get that looked at, figured out. I'd like to back up a little bit on that and state that there's been a news article that's been released by the Osage News and it says chief of Osage Congress at odds over disenrollment of members. I personally don't feel like I'm at odds with the executive branch over this. And I know that that's not his title. I know he did not put that there. It was the news, but we haven't even had a discussion to know if we're at odds yet or not over some of these issues. There are issues that are before us that we need to resolve. So moving on, hazardous mitigation, hazard mitigation plan is my understanding that we don't poll park FEMA funds. Should we, a tornado blows away or a flood washes away, that without a mitigation plan in place, that this nation does a poll park for federal funds, federal disaster relief funds. I'm looking forward to hearing about that in committee. Village Reorganization Act, I like the piece of legislation I've seen, I've seen this time, although I do have questions about it. I understand the chief of police coming to the chief of the Osage Nation and asking him, who's going to enforce their, what are they called, their laws? Can't think of the name right now. Who's going to, what are they called? Ordinances. Who will be the enforcer of the ordinances here in these villages? Which brings, you know, you have a question about it? I have a question about it because it doesn't stay in the law who enforces ordinances in the village. I think we need to take a really good look at that. I think we need to take a look, a better look at if the ordinance or ordinances are going to be applied equally to all villages. I think it would be, there's a lot of issues to look at here to me before we step into moving forward to make sure we're not just haphazardly throwing some out, something out there during the special session. We don't have a lot of time to look at that. I think we need to continue on right now. I'll be quiet because we have seven bills on general order to move along. Thank you for your time and let's get work. We are now on bills and resolutions on first reading. The first bill that's heading is ONCR 1606. Congressman Shaw, yes.
And Chairman, I ask for indulgence and that or my colleague, Congressman Supranov, who is starting down this list here. I'd like to move with the Osage Nation Congress place ONCR 1606 to the call for the ninth special session.
This is parlor Tom Vila.
He has a motion, yes, he has a motion, but I don't have a second on the motion.
Thank you.
Discussion's in motion.
And Chairman, my colleagues, this resolution is to request an additional $6 million annual distribution to the nation to be included in the 2016 annual plan of operations of the gaming enterprise. I'm aware that there may be other methods to gain additional revenue, but right now with $20,000 that in reality remains that's unencumbered in the treasury, we either gain more revenue and or reduce expenses. I don't think this nation is safe and leaves such a small amount of money. I think we have other activities that are confronting us that we need to, that we'll leave capital for before next fall. We've been offered this money before and I think that it should be heard on this call and discussed. And if it's going to be favored or supported by Congress, then we need to allow adequate time for the gaming enterprise board to reinvent their 2016 annual plan to include this distribution.
Any more discussions in motion? Congressman Edwards. I ask the sponsor to provide me an explanation on how you got to the figure of $6 million and you think that, what number you think is an appropriate cushion for the general treasury to have over and above general appropriations and special appropriations?
$6 million came from the amount that had originally been amended into the plan in September, early September, and then amended back out of the plan. And I was, I'm well aware that that final number could be different. But right now what I'm arguing is not the amount, but a resolution to include an annual distribution, that resolution to be added to this call.
Thank you Congressman, that's what I was thinking. We're talking about a motion to amend the call. I think the merits of the resolution should be discussed at a later time. Congressman Supranov.
I don't oppose to this at this time because I'm talking to the sponsor and I don't know why anyone acted this, but I just don't want the idea that is competing bills on, that this much is the word, makes it harder to, to focus on one. The, we have a bill coming up and for discussion in Congress committee today. If, if that goes nowhere, then the proper time to admit this would be tomorrow because it'd be a last ditch attempt. And this resolution has not affected the law, but I'm not going to guarantee. I'm not going to guarantee we're going to get that. So at this time, I would suggest that we don't admit this today. We may admit it tomorrow, but already agreed if this bill, 1607, doesn't have the proper right support, it all will fall and it won't be competing with any other proposal. So I'd just like to say a time and actually reach out this time. I don't know why I came up to that.
Congressman Shaw.
The reason why I submitted this, yes Congressman Supernal, we didn't discuss it. But from my look at the legislation as filed, I didn't see an allowance at this time, at its current stage, for additional revenue. And I became alarmed that should that, should the additional legislation hit a snag, hit a veto, hit the, receive a veto that is now override, that following this special session will be the same fiscal predicament that we are at the beginning.
Thank you Congressman. Any more discussion to the motion, Congressman Walker.
I'm going to support this. It is a resolution. It is just a request. Can be amended to be a different amount. It will be, will be either supported by or... There will be discussions with gaming pertaining to their annual plan of operations and other bill, other bills that could affect the amount that this Congress needs to appropriate funds during this government. So if we confirm that we have enough money, we won't need the request anymore potentially. So it's a request. I think it's a good thing to have on the call so we can consider an amount that we might need, may not need. So I'll be supporting that.
Any more discussion to the motion, Congressman Supernal.
I just requested that Congress do not put this on the call today. It'd be if they put on the call tomorrow. I hear you vote against it at this time, but I might vote for it tomorrow.
Roll call please.
Congresswoman Edwards?
No.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
No.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Supernal?
No.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buckelhead?
No.
Speaker Whitehorn?
No.
Motion fails. So we are now on bills, resolutions on first reading under that heading. Congressman Supernal, I think you're first. Did you have a point of war on? Yes.
First reading, ONCA 1606, an act to amend the competitive bidding act 15ONC, section 2 dash 401, at sec, and to establish an alternate effective date.
Please continue.
Also, ONCA 1607, an act to amend and restate the Osage Nation Gaming Reform Act of 2007, 14ONC, section 12 dash 105, and to establish an alternate effective date.
ONCA 1606 and ONCA 1607 are referred to the Congress Economic Development Committee. Congressman Shaw, I believe you're next under this page.
I'm Chairman, Governor of the Congress. First reading, ONCA 1608, an act to amend ONCA 1584, reduce the appropriation to the Division of Government Operations for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $779,735, and to establish an alternate effective date.
Thank you Congressman. ONCA 1608 is referred to Governmental Operations Committee. Congresswoman Edwards, I believe that you're next under...
ONCA 1608 is an act to amend ONCA on 1612.
Please, sorry.
ONCA 1612 is an act to amend ONCA 1584 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Government Operations for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $76,381, which establishes an alternate effective date. The findings and purpose of this act are set forth in section one of the bill. They leave their self-explanatory. They state that Congress intended to reduce the wages line item in this division bill, but was unaware of the amount that it should be reduced based on the lack of information that it had at the time. We now have that information. And I believe that it is in the inherent power of the Osage Nation Congress to appropriate whatever sum of money they want to appropriate. The legislative or the executive branch of the government has the right, the chief, the principal chief has the right to reduce or strike line items in appropriation bills. The chief of the government does not have the right to tell us, the Congress, how much money we have to put in those line items. That's the responsibility that you need, responsibility of Congress as provided to us by the Osage Nation Constitution. I think the, I think the chief gave it a good try and he said, "Well, we may have to grapple with this and we may have to ask the Supreme Court if it's okay for Congress to appropriate whatever sum of money they want." But I think that we need the Osage Supreme Court to tell us that because we have the Constitution that tells us that. That's the purpose of this bill. Thank you.
Congressman Edwards, you have another bill right after this.
I'll try not to make that big speech.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
I'm hashing about this. The next bill is, oh, no, I am hashing about this one too. ONCA 1616, an act to amend and restate the Osage Nation Membership Act, 21ONC, section 101 at sec, and establish an alternate effective date. And the purpose of this bill is to revisit 21ONC, section 1101 at sec, to establish some further law. The Osage Nation Constitution, under the legislative branch section at section 14, requires the Osage Nation to pass all necessary laws. And under the membership provision in section three, it states that the Osage Nation shall pass laws. It's under the membership laws. It states the Osage Nation shall pass laws that regulate the membership. We passed this law back in 2006 and we provided a removal section in the law, for example, but it's not sufficient to deal with the facts that we are faced with today. So the Osage Nation Congress needs to pass laws that address some of the issues that have come up actually very recently. In fact, the time that I learned about these incidences were through a conversation with the chief in October. I don't know that this Congress has gotten any official word on exactly what we are faced with, but that's the purpose of this bill. It's to take it to the public, find out what kind of issues we're having, and pass some laws that will address the issues that are apparently occurring in the membership office. I will point out that Congress in that first bill delegated its responsibilities to a membership office which it placed in the executive branch. So what Congress gives, Congress can take away. Thank you.
Thank you Congresswoman. ONCA 1616 and ONCA 1617 are referred to Governmental Operations Committee. Congressman Walker. Excuse me, let me restate that. ONCA 1612 and ONCA 1616 are referred to Governmental Operations. Please continue.
Thank you Speaker, Governor of the Congress. Reading in ONCA 1617, an act to reaffirm the intergovernmental relationship between the Osage Nation and the Osage villages to recognize the existing village constitution and by law, to provide an alternate effective date.
Please continue.
Also reading in ONCR 1604, a resolution to adopt and approve the Osage Nation Hazard Mitigation Plan.
ONCA 1617 and ONCR 1604 are referred to Governmental Operations.
Speaker of the Congress, Congresswoman Edwards, reading in ONCR 1605, a resolution to approve the relationship governing the membership acquisition process, membership party issues process, relinquishment of membership and correspondence about membership status with other governments.
Thank you Congresswoman. ONCR 1605 is referred to Governmental Operations Committee. We are now on bills and resolutions on general order. We're on general order day one. The legislation is read in by the sponsor. Congresswoman Edwards, you have the first bill under this heading.
Thank you Madam Speaker. ONCA 1610 is an act to amend ONCA 1522 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Land, Commerce, and Public Safety for the fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $3,558 and to establish an alternate effective date. This time I would move to suspend the rules, modify the agenda, and advance ONCA 1610 to general order day two on today's agenda.
First second to the motion. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Congressman Hamilton?
No.
Congressman Maker?
No.
Congressman Mason?
No.
Congressman Norris?
No.
Congresswoman Pratt?
No.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Supernal?
No.
Congressman Walker?
No.
Congresswoman Buckelhead?
No.
Congresswoman Edwards?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes.
It fails, motion fails. We are now on the next six, please.
ONCA 1611 is an act to amend ONCA 1583 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Health, Fitness, and Wellness, Division of the Osage Nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $17,036 and to establish an alternate effective date.
Please continue.
ONCA 1613 is an act to amend ONCA 1585 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Education and Early Childhood Services for the fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $83,254 and to establish an alternate effective date.
Please continue.
ONCA 1614 is an act to amend ONCA 1586 to reduce the appropriation to the Cultural Preservation Arts, Heritage, and Language Division of the Osage Nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $51,279 and to establish an alternate effective date.
Please continue.
ONCA 1615 is an act to amend ONCA 1587 to reduce the appropriation in the Child, Family, and Senior Community Services Division of the Osage Nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $23,235 and to establish an alternate effective date.
Thank you Congresswoman Edwards. We're now on motions and notices. Are there any motions and notices? Congressman Walker.
Governmental Operations Committee will need immediately follow session today until noon.
Thank you. Congressman Shaw?
Operations Committee will be at 1:00 PM today.
Thank you. Congressman Supernal.
I would notice, I'd like to mention this in the chief's presence today. People listening in here may have misunderstood. I don't think the chief intended this meaning, but he said that, implied that if the Congress attacked the membership issues, that we would keep delaying. And I think the intent is to resolve it as quickly as possible legally, not to delay and then say that we've known about this for two months and didn't do anything about it. When I first heard about it, I thought it was an isolated incident. I didn't realize until recently that it's widespread and goes back into the previous administration. And after I found that out, I talked to people that served like eight or nine years ago. When my cousin was a legal advisor to Chief Gray then, she said that she had turned down many people who tried to get on the roll. So without a turn of vigilance, people are going to, they're going to take advantage of us. And so I think that we need to do all we can to resolve this issue once and for all. And also, I want to repeat that the constitutional amendment was passed that those people who are legitimate descendants of the 1906 roll have a right to membership. So I don't want anybody to be confused that anyone's trying to go back and kick people off the roll that legitimately are on there. This is a, this is a different issue, current fraud in my opinion. I just want to say that.
Would you like to announce your meeting to, right now? Your commerce meeting, would you like to announce that?
Yeah, but our meeting in commerce was changed from two to five.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other more, any other motions or notices now? Seeing that we're at a round. Congressman Edwards.
Has a preferential to a motion or any reason we cannot meet at nine o'clock tomorrow night?
Social Services meeting is scheduled next Thursday, nine thirty.
Eight thirty tomorrow.
President Trump, ten minutes, four seconds. All in favor of saying yes? We're in range until nine, until it's ten o'clock tomorrow.
So after the minutes ready for tomorrow, or should we go down to the...